Good evening. Welcome to the May 10th, 2022, meeting of the Sherburne School Committee. My name is Nancy Cordell and I call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Information on school committee meeting dates and times and meeting agendas are posted on the Dover Sherburne District website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. The first, um, the first item on our agenda is community comment. And I'd like to ask if there are, is anyone on here that would like to make a community comment? Nope. Okay. Well, once gone, twice I'm just looking, but okay, great. All right. So we will move on to the next agenda item, um, which is, um, which I get always so excited to hear about the CSA report because it's always wonderful. So Monica, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Nancy. Oh, sorry. Thank you, Nancy. Um, I have my little notes here because it's a huge report. There's a lot of work that happens. I'm just making sure I have it all in front of me. Give me a second. All right. So, um, Pine Hill did go through, oh, sorry, not final, final CSA went through, um, a very interesting time in the past year. Uh, not just us, right? It is the entire, uh, the entire world has seen the pandemic show its different colors. And the last year was very much where nobody knew, like, are we going to open up? Are we not going to open up? Are the kids ready for this or not? Do we do the enrichments or do we not? How many, you know, in-person activities and stuff? So we couldn't really plan in to our entirety, uh, if there's going to be an in-person event. Should we do the ice cream social? Should we do the monster mash? So there was a lot of, uh, budgeting as well as, you know, events and lots of tough decisions that we had to take. Almost last minute decisions, which was pretty interesting. But I am glad to say that we literally felt like a very normal year this, uh, you know, as we went by after the post, post, I want to say post-November, um, as things started to open up and, you know, it started to feel so much normal. So out of all the things that we have done, which I will give a little, you know, a sneak peek list, super quick one. Um, but I have to say that we, we did make an ice cream social happen. It was outside. It was without masks. Um, and then whatever was inside, some of the events were with masks. Um, so it was, it was a good mix. We had multiple new family events, meet and greets. We had medical family and friend playdates and meetups. Um, there's ice skating event that's planned in future. There's presentations from rainforest reptiles and numerous such activities. There was, um, during the holidays, we had the hot cocoa event, which was outdoors. We had a Santa Claus, a dad was a Santa Claus. And they literally gave out gifts to kids and they had a lot of fun. We had a book fair, raffle basket, which book fair was, uh, still, um, online only. Um, but it was, it was a pretty good success. We had raffle baskets as normal, um, monster mash, the biggest hit ever. Um, we were able to drive, um, a community gifting event. So we started a community outreach position, a coordinator position in CSA. We did that last year. It was a great success. This year we made it official. And we, uh, we adopted families and we gave gifts to them. And this year we are also launching a spring community outreach, which will be supporting families, uh, from Ukraine. Um, so that's going to come up soon. Um, we also had, uh, we were able to work out normal Valentine Street for teachers and teacher appreciation, driver appreciation, nurse appreciation coming up, custodian. We were able to make them all normal, like in-person breakfast, et cetera, uh, luncheons. Um, there were the, the Broadmoor event kicked back in again. We had a new buy nothing or other swap shop event where the community could bring in things that they wanted to donate. And people who wanted to pick it up could just take it for a small entry fee, which was, um, it had a little challenges. But this was the first time we tried it. And again, a great way to bring the community together and also raise some funds. Um, we are doing DSHR scholarships again this year. We actually are almost about to finalize our winners this week. Um, and then, uh, there's also a new end of year event, a party sort of a thing that we are doing for all the kids. Another way to raise funds as well as, um, send, you know, send off kids to somewhere on a great start. Uh, we also had, uh, we have a lot of fifth grade meetups and events coming up. Um, and then there was a lot of work and Julie's here. I couldn't, I mean, she is the best person to speak to this. I will not do justice for this. But she had, we have worked on the bird garden, landscape improvements, pumpkin patch is the part, it is, it was done last week. Bird sanctuary outdoor classroom project is like, we are raising funds for that and there's a plan for it. There's so much work going on. Um, I know Julie has, um, is working with Dorothea, uh, for, you know, in sustainability. And they have been talking about learning labs and solar, solar panels, et cetera. Like there's just a lot of work. And I'm telling you again, I am not doing enough justice to this. So there's a lot of things happening there. We're trying to get grants and raise as many funds as possible there. Um, I don't even know if I should be going through the list of enrichments. I have literally like, I'm kind of scared now because it's like a page full of enrichment activities for every grade. So many author visits, so many ASM performances and stuff happening. I just, I'm, I think I'm really excited by the fact that it's just gotten back to normal and kids are so happy to see all these things. Um, and then we have, one of the things we've made a huge progress on is promoting Amazon smiles. Uh, so that when the community buys, uh, stuff from Amazon, the stuff is, uh, whatever, a portion of their, um, giving is donated to CSA. So we've raised a decent amount of money through that this year as well as, um, Christine Walsh has done a great job of tying up with multiple restaurants. And all we have to do is go and eat there and they give some proceeds to CSA. So these are like those invisible kind of events that are happening in the background and are supporting CSA, which is making all these enrichments and so many things coming together. Um, lastly, I would, I know this is like, out of all those things, I can't believe I just wrapped it in such few sentences. But we do have our new presidents identified and they have already put the board together. We had the last person identified, uh, two days ago. Um, so we're going to vote on all of them. We actually voted on majority of them and the rest of them will be, um, going out in the newsletter for, um, community voting. So the board is in place. Wendy Epic and Christine Walsh will be our co-presidents for next year. And, uh, I think the, the CSA couldn't get in better hands than them. So that was my quick update. Any questions that I can answer?
If I may comment, Monica, I wanted to thank you for your leadership. Um, you know, I, I know it's a, a, a large group effort. Um, but a reminder that our predominant, uh, the predominant ways that we fundraise for all of these CSA activities is through a biannual auction event, a gala event that, that is the largest fundraiser. And with COVID, that hasn't happened for, uh, three cycles, if I'm correct, two, two cycles, three years. And so our CSA has outdone even itself, uh, to procure funds, uh, through fundraising and creative ways. Uh, there are no significant, uh, we haven't dropped any of the significant and beloved, uh, programs that we're accustomed to. We've certainly adapted on the fly with remote school and hybrid school and, and, and all of that. Uh, but it's remarkable to me that our CSA has been able to, uh, facilitate providing the level of quality that we're accustomed to. And it, it, uh, is in good part due to your leadership and, and, and the board and, and all of the volunteers. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. That actually, thank you for mentioning that because I did forget to mention. This was, I think, one of those few years where we have granted all the teacher grants. Um, and that we didn't like, that was about $4,800 and all of them were granted. And, um, though we started the year thinking we'll dip into our reserves, um, we were able to raise enough. And just yesterday I was talking to the treasurer, um, who is, uh, Chris, Christina. Um, she just confirmed that with, if the fundraiser raises another $5,000, we will not dip into our reserves at all. So that is like, we will break even and we will be right there. So that makes me really like, I'm crossing my fingers. And I think that'll be, um, a great, great success for CSA, especially next year that the auction year will come in. I think we'll do even better.
Our CSA spends $30,000 a year on enrichment programs. An additional $15,000 a year, uh, to support our naturalist education experience through Broadmoor. And then of course, the host of other, uh, social and enrichment opportunities. So that is truly remarkable. I know for the, the raffle basket, there's usually somewhere between 15 and 20 baskets, uh, that folks donate, uh, products to or money to fill these big baskets and our students buy chances through raffle tickets. And this year we sold over 7,000, kids bought 7,000 chances to win those 15 baskets. It was very bittersweet when we announced the winners because kids didn't get statistically that they were super duper lucky if they won. Um, but, uh, thank you, thank you for, uh, your high level caliber enrichment that you have enveloped our school with.
Yes, I, I echo that as well, um, with my kids going to P, the, the CSA had, the CSA and the partnership with Pine Hill and the parents and the leadership, Monica, and leadership through the pandemic and, and getting to the levels and doing is just, it's amazing. And it continues. I mean, that is, it's such a huge piece of the experience that all the kids have at Pine Hill is what the CSA offers. Whether it's enrichment or the really fun things that my kids will still talk about to the, you know, you know, you know, one to four years out of, out of Pine Hill. So thank you so much. And, you know, um, I look forward to seeing with the new leadership. You know, crazy Wendy is gonna like, is gonna be, is gonna be great in the, in that role. So.
Absolutely. I think I want to thank the entire team for that. Uh, they have been phenomenal. I didn't know nothing. And, uh, the team has helped me, uh, with every single thing. So Julie and Gita, you both are here. So thank you to each one of us here.
And I know at the beginning of the year, I believe that you, I think it was the beginning of the year or maybe a year and a half ago, you did a lot of the work, the unsexy work, um, that, you know, that never, the unsexy work that isn't fundraising or putting on events and cleaning up the systems or cleaning up the background, which, you know, I, I don't never, you know, that can't go unnoticed. But no one really, no one really cares. But there's a lot of work that goes through that in, uh, you know, so the documentation that you put together, et cetera, et cetera. So we thank you for that as well.
Yes. Uh, it, it, thank you for reminding that. Yes, those doc, uh, we have, uh, we were able to even extract the old emails and bring down the documentation that were in the emails before. And now we have like folders of yours of work that has been organized. So hopefully that will be very helpful for the future, uh, boards as well.
Absolutely.
I completely forgot to mention, Dr. Brown has been the pillar for CSA. She has been so helpful in so many, so many places. Um, I personally have a lot to thank you, Dr. Brown. So, um, I wouldn't have been able to do anything without you. Uh, and the, uh, board really, really is appreciative of you. Thanks so much.
Thank you. It's the cornerstone of the positive culture and climate at our school. It's, um, in great thanks to the parent support that we feel every single day. So thank you for championing that.
All right, great. Um, now we will, uh, I, that will segue to you, Dr. Brown.
Well, thank you. I wanted to start by, uh, thanking our CSA for spoiling us and all, all of the Sherburne parents out there. Uh, last week was teacher appreciation week and, um, we greatly appreciate the notes and the cards and the signage around our school and of course, the delicious treats. So thank you, um, thank you for, for, for taking time to spoil us. Um, school committee, I wanted to give you an update as you recall, uh, through some of the new positions that we were able to procure in, in the upcoming budget, uh, such as the split counselor position and an extra interventionist and, and, uh, some of the vacancies that we have due to, uh, turnover, staff turnover. Um, we're deep in the throes of recruiting and interviewing and vetting candidates, um, who, uh, who we think will be dynamos to add to our faculty. Um, we, you know, we, we usually do screening interviews and then we do in-person interviews. And then we, uh, put candidates in front of our students because that's, uh, to me, that's where the rubber hits the road. Where you can see, um, dynamic connection or, or lack thereof. Uh, so we're currently in the process of hiring an adjustment counselor, uh, a classroom teacher and, um, sadly, a school nurse. Um, so we, we were very, very lucky. You, I know you received my parent communication as well as, you know, in the school committee report here, I would be remiss, uh, obviously everybody who contributes, uh, in, at Pine Hill and in, in across Dover Sherburne are, are valued employees and, and are part of our larger fabric. Uh, but the, I, dare I say, uh, certainly the person I have relied on most, uh, in general, and especially these past two years has been Nurse Fedor. Uh, so I wanted to publicly, uh, thank her for her nine years of dedication at Pine Hill School and across the district as a nurse leader and, um, for shepherding us through, um, uh, through, through working miracles and, and how she, uh, interfaced with our Board of Health and our district, uh, leaders and, uh, school nurse networks beyond, uh, you know, across the state, uh, to, to help us make the best, safest decisions for our kids. Um, I, um, am sad to be losing her, but it is, um, uh, certainly an exciting opportunity that presents her. Uh, uh, we are very, very fortunate in that we have had the opportunity to conduct a year-long interview, practice, almost a whole, uh, school year with Nurse Amy Versaw. Uh, she's been a floater nurse. She's spent a fair amount of time at Pine Hill. She happens to also be part of the Sherburne community as a, as a Pine Hill and, um, regional parent. And she, I'm, I'm confident that she has both the head smart and the heart, uh, TLC that our students, that our students deserve. And, and will, she's got big shoes to fill and I'm confident she will fill them well. Um, so, uh, I, I shared a little bit about our staffing assignments and our, our enrollment projections for next year. I wanted to share that we had, uh, along with, along with our, um, all of the schools in Dover Sherburne, we had the benefit of some really impactful professional development last Wednesday, uh, with a consulting group that we use periodically, uh, to coach the leadership team and to train our teachers every, you know, every four or five years, we cycle through updated training on emergency preparedness. And I gave a shout out in my report to the Sherburne, uh, police chief and fire chief, uh, who, along with a lot of their staff members were on campus and part of the training and, and are really working hard behind the scenes with our, uh, folks at our superintendent's office, uh, to make sure that we have coordinated, uh, plans in response to, uh, some of the emergency scenarios that, that we always need to be, uh, thinking about and preparing for. Um, uh, that was really impactful. We got great staff feedback as a result of that training. And I also wanted to mention, in addition to all of the wonderful, uh, CSA enrichment programs, uh, that are brought to our school, uh, we, um, we had a, uh, impromptu opportunity, uh, with a, with a student developer presenter that, that we became aware of, uh, who happened to be in our neck of the woods, uh, from Canada. Uh, and our students had an assembly last week. Our students, uh, grades one through three had a special program on character development, which tied in nicely with our Pine Hill promise and our core values and all of the things that we're always trying to, uh, shift and lift and reinforce as part of our positive behavior intervention system and school culture and climate. And our fourth and fifth graders, uh, had some focused, uh, uh, information on anti-bullying and the importance of, uh, uh, being upstanders, not bystanders, when, when others act in, um, disaccord with, with, uh, our core values. And, and both the students and the faculty gave two thumbs up. Uh, um, uh, so, uh, that's all I have for a big picture overview. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any more questions? Amanda Dennis, you don't know. It's an end of an era, end of an era with Jill leaving. All right. Thank you so much, Dr. Brown.
Thank you.
And I will turn it over to Dawn for the warrant report and then the financial report.
Yes, great. Thank you, Nancy. So, uh, you have your monthly report of, uh, warrants that have been processed since the last time the committee met. Nancy, we should connect offline about, um, who might be able to just take over for signing. Um, because we do have sets of warrants going over this week. So maybe, uh, you can train someone who's willing to volunteer until you guys reorgan June and, and make your assignments. But we will probably have a period of time where there are some warrants that still need to be signed. So we can, we can cut offline. Um, and, uh, the next thing we have is the monthly financial report. So your last financial report was as of February 28th. So two more months of operations have gone by, um, that are reflected in this report. Plus we really start trying to clean up our projections so that we can sort of forecast where we're going to be, um, at June 30th. Um, so you know, we had been carrying, um, a negative variance in our educational assistant line item. And we were waiting to see how everything was going to sort of fall out as we got closer to the year. So based on where we are right now, we have, uh, transferred $50,000 of educational assistance salaries to a couple of different, um, outside funding sources. So one is your ESSER funding, which is, you know, we had set aside ESSER money to cover, um, additional educational support as needed in the schools, um, post-pandemic. Um, $15,000 is going to go to the pre-K revolving fund. We have actually an extra EA in the, uh, pre-K based on sort of our new formula. And we do have funds available in the pre-K. So we are moving one of those educational, a part of one of its educational assistance over to the pre-K revolving fund. And you actually, when I mentioned that, have your, um, special revenue revolving funds balance, uh, a sheet as of March 31st. So you can isolate there the pre-K revolving fund and see that we do have funds available, uh, to make that, um, reallocation. And the last one is actually something that just came about and was actually very fortunate for Sherburne. Because as I'm going to talk about out of districts in a few minutes, um, this is a huge help in that, uh, Sherburne was able to, um, be awarded or allocated 20,000, a little more than 20,000 for what they're calling pandemic-related enrollment disruptions impacting chapter 70. Um, that's a mouthful, but if you've heard of the news, they've talked about the pothole appropriation. So with being in hybrid and remote last year, a lot of school districts lost students. And your chapter 70 funding for this year is based on sort of your enrollment, um, from the previous year. So there were schools that the influx of students came back in and, um, uh, that, you know, gave, they had lower funding than they would have had on a typical year. So there was this allocation out there. They, they didn't know how they were going to distribute it. So they came up with a formula. And both Dover and Sherburne, um, each picked up a little bit of funding. And I think that's because we're a district of one elementary school. So even some of your normal, um, enrollment fluctuations sort of came into play here. Uh, because as you know, we, we educated majority of our students last year. We obviously had a little bit more in homeschooling. Um, but just the ins and outs, uh, Pine Hill ended up with a little luck. It's had over 20,000 from this allocation. So we are able to appropriate, um, uh, expenses to that right away without any kind of approval from the town or such. So we're putting additional $20,000 in EA salaries to that. So therefore we were able to take 50,000 out of your operating budget, which you can see, um, leaves us with right now about $11,000 left to play around with for your in-district operating. So that's Pine Hill. If we switch over and look at the out-of-district, um, you know, it's a very volatile, um, environment without a district. And in the last month or so, we have had some additional, uh, placements that have occurred, um, increasing, um, our out-of-district tuitions by about $75,000. So you will see that we're negative, um, in our out-of-district in total. And we were going to let that ride and we will make sure though, that when we get down to the year and then the year we see how much operating monies we do have left, um, we'll probably end up with zero. Uh, but we'll use circuit breaker to cover the out-of-district, um, overage. So that's what we're looking at right now. Um, just wanted to give the committee an update on that. But, but you know, as now we're trying to sort of see where would we be on June 30th. So, um, we're just waiting to see how much more of that circuit breaker will have to apply to fiscal year '22.
All right, great. Thanks, Dawn. Anyone have any questions? All right, great. And I will turn it over to, I don't know if it's Lori or Barbara or both for the outdoor classroom, which I'm so, so, so excited about. This is a lot, this is awesome. I'm so excited over this. This is a destination. So, um, right, right in Pine Hill's backyard, this is so taken away.
Yeah, so. It's going to kick us off. And then Julie Dreyfus is, uh, the wealth of information.
Okay, truly, I did not mean to, not mean to, um, mention you. So.
Totally fine.
She's really the linchpin of this project, let me tell you. Um, I'm going to share my screen just to begin. Um, I'm Lori Ryan, the librarian at Pine Hill. And I want to show you a picture of the area of the, um, playground that we're thinking of, or that we're planning to put this. This is the, let me get a little bigger. This is the, uh, the front playground. You can see the parking lot in the background and the basketball court. And over here is the access road. And the two trees that you see, um, are, you'll see these in the plan for the garden in just a second. But this is the area that is going to be transformed into our Pine Hill garden and outdoor classroom. It is, uh, the most exciting project that I, I think I'm going to experience. I've been at Pine Hill for over 20 years. And, um, it's just going to be magnificent. This is the plan that Julie has worked, uh, I, I don't even know how many hours she must have put into this, but, um, uh, you know, meeting with everyone and, and it started with her, uh, coming in as the CSA leader for the garden, garden, uh, various gardens we had at Pine Hill. And as she worked with students and teachers, she discovered that, uh, there was a lot more that we could do to meet the curriculum needs of our school and the needs of the students and the teachers. So she interviewed and spoke with and, um, just really, uh, was very thoughtful about the process of gathering ideas of what we could do to make a space that would be multipurpose and meet as many needs as possible in our school. Um, so this is the, the plan. There are two structures. There's the, uh, outdoor classroom, uh, pagoda that has a canvas that you can draw across it to, to shade it. Um, there's flexible seating in there, benches, and it can be used for anything. You know, um, the sky's the limit with that. Small groups, whole class, any subject. Um, and over here is the, what we're calling the learning lab, which is a converted shed that will be used, um, as a little lab, like a little science lab. And some of the ideas for that are seed germination. We do, in fourth grade, we do this whole plant, uh, project where students pick different variables. And it's always been difficult to manage in the classroom. And having this dedicated science space is really going to, uh, to, um, enhance that along with many other things. The, um, the way this is planned, all these raids, beds and, and little garden areas connect to specific areas of our curriculum. So, um, you know, from the fifth grade, being garden leaders and helping manage this space along with, um, you know, you can see rain barrels and solar panels. So there's opportunities for students to learn about sustainability. Um, the fourth grade, as I said, their plant adaptation unit, and they have a renewable energy unit is supported, um, in this space. Uh, third grade, bird adaptations. Second grade has all kinds of, uh, habitats, plant and animal adaptation and habitat work that they do. First grade, they have, um, a dedicated sunflower garden, the Miss Sullivan Sunflower Garden here. So they can germinate their seeds and come and plant and make this, you know, beautiful area come alive. And the kindergarten, they have their pumpkin patch. And, and again, that's another thing that this garden supports. The, um, the beauty of it though, is beyond the science aspect. Um, there's sensory paths, um, small seating areas. There's, you know, just so many opportunities and so much potential in this for all of us. And I can tell you, you know, having taught through the pandemic, uh, we loved our outdoor teaching and our outdoor spaces. And this is just going to be. And this is just going to be a gift to everyone at Pine Hill. It's just, I know teachers are thrilled and can't wait for it to come, so we can all take advantage of it. And as I said, the linchpin of this has been Julie and she is going to talk to you more about the details and the accessibility and all the thought that has gone into this. So Julie, take it away.
Sounds good. Can I actually, I think great minds think alike Lori, because I too was trying to help people visualize the space. And I have something on a slideshow. So if it's possible for me to share my screen, Dawn, I'm not sure if I can just.
No, you're outside. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm going to stop sharing then.
Okay. And and I am hoping that you can visualize what I see as well.
Yeah.
Perfect. And if I do this, hopefully. So Lori just showed you the design and just again, because I think for a lot of people, it's hard to imagine something that's not there. And I really appreciate that Lori showed you a picture at ground level, what it looks like. This is a satellite image. This is actually from Google Earth and they have not updated since our beautiful parking redesign. For the function of the space, there's nothing that's different other than the chain link fences slightly different, but on the whole, it's exactly the same space. And so just to superimpose the design, so you can imagine how it lays out and how things will flow. I put that over top. I realize I don't have a cursor pointer and keynote, but there are three entrances and exits in the space. So when you first come past the mature tree, there will be an entrance into the space. If you look out at, I'm literally pointing as I do this, I realize it's useless. And if you look out at where the large playground is, you will see there is another entrance in that space to entrance and exit. And then also back by the learning lab, kind of near the basketball court, there is another entrance and exit. And we have added those three points. I've sat and stared at kids running around to really see how things flow to make sure that we have all of the natural flow at recess and at recess, so that it is not a hindrance to have this in the space. And then just, and Lori already showed it very well. I just superimposed a little lightly, so you can see what we're replacing, which is just going to be broken sod and some heavily compacted earth. And there is still plenty of room for children to be able to run to the soccer fields. We don't impede on the soccer field in any way. And in fact, this gives teachers and parents more space to be able to sit and relax and keep an eye on kids when they're on either of the playgrounds while still having a seat, not having to go and push people on the swings. And as Lori said, just to give you, again, I think, I think pictures speak a lot. So our outdoor learning lab is going to be a fully accessible space. There will be a ramp, a custom ramp that is going to have access into this from both directions with the landing ready at the doorway. There will be a wraparound bench on three sides inside. It'll be a standing bench with one that'll be slightly lower again for wheelchair height. But will allow students to be able to work. We're going to have grow lights. We're going to have heating mats. We're going to have really kind of anything that we're going to need in that space, we can add. And the key here is that there is passive lighting, but we'll also have a light inside. And if you are a teacher, you will be able to clearly see what's going on inside the building when you're not inside. And you'll note that we have three solar panels. I'm excited to say that through a grant through the Grin spoon Foundation, we've actually funded half of the cost of the solar panels. And we are using parents to help us fundraise the rest. So they're on track. And hopefully we'll have that completely fundraised by the time the learning lab is installed. And just to give you a visual, this is just a stock image of what the pergola is going to look like, but it is going to be a red cedar pergola. And it will have basically a giant roller blind that is going to allow you to manually pull a cord and have like a sun fabric, the very heavy duty sun fabric, cover the space. So if you need some shade, it's a hot day. If there's maybe a slight prizzle going on, and then you can be able to move that back when you're done. And the eight classroom benches, we have eight benches, each in gate grave for the Pine Hill Promise Word. It's very convenient that eight benches fit an entire class and the promise was eight words long. I'm excited to say that we've put those up on our CSA fundraiser and we've actually almost sold every single one of them. We're not even two weeks into our appeal. So there's clearly an appetite for those benches, which is wonderful to hear. And the one thing that we haven't talked about, and this is really going to be revealed at the auction, the gala next spring is our Pine Hill Promise Sculpture. We had an amazing suggestion from one of our special ed teachers, Chris Branda, who said, we should have a wishing, a wishing well. And I thought, no water, we can't do water. And so we, we looked around and we started to talk to various local artists and we found a fantastic artist named Alexia Intinitis. And we collaborated with him and talked about the Pine Hill Promise and what we wanted to represent and how do we make this safe for children? And this is what he came back to us with, which is absolutely brilliant. It has a child, an adolescent and a grown up intertwined and supporting each other. The promise sculpture is what we're calling it right now is going to be rainbow painted. Just for this purpose, you painted it red. It's going to stand six feet tall and the concept behind it is strength to community and the ability to affect change. And students will be able to trace their hand along a curve and make a wish. We thought that would be far safer than having any type of pool of water. I'm excited about that sculpture. And this is just back to the, the actual design itself. I think that Lori actually covered a lot of what we're doing between the outdoor classroom, the learning lab. We wanted to make sure, and this is a key difference from when we presented this project, three days before the school shut down for the pandemic is, and then we've had time to really look at the space to make sure the design is reflecting the use. And critical to that change was the fact we have made the entire space ADA accessible. And so to do that, we did have to take out some of the planting space. But in turn, we have the clearances needed to go around the beds to be able to have the ramp access to have to continuous paving throughout the entire space. There's no mulch. It's all the same tamped down paving space. Fortunately, our good friend and landscape designer Nicole Weemeyer, who has designed the space is also on the Disability Advisory Committee for the town. And so her many hats have served us well in this project to make sure that we've made this completely accessible. Then the fact she has a very lived experience too. I don't think I have any other slides and I can stop sharing now. And so in terms of two, two big things that I think Lori did not touch on would be money and maintenance, which I'm sure as the school committee, you'd probably want to know about that. So funding streams come from a couple of different places. As you are very well aware, the Solwin Fund has donated their 150th year gift for the learning lab, which is fantastic. We have our DSCF proposal, which we're hoping to hear about in the next month, month and a half, maybe not month and a half, we're already partway into May, are we? And the CSA is also, we are, like I said, we're part of our spring appeal is we've released this project to the public and we've had nothing but wonderful support for it. And I can say that, again, we're not even quite two weeks in. We've already had several thousand dollars coming in donations towards the project, many of which are benches. If you were, if you remember back into the design, in addition to the classroom benches, we have a number of sitting benches throughout the space, nine in total. And those will be, many of them are spoken for, donated to retiring teachers or school committee members that have passed away. And so that is a very nice use for those benches and people are very happy to donate towards that. The other portion is we do have a few small grants. Like I said, the Grin spoon Foundation has helped us fund the part of the solar panels. And I am hoping, even though I, I'm hoping that someone at the auction is going to be willing to donate the the Pine Hill Promise Sculpture, we are going to talk to the Sherburne Cultural Council about seeking funds that way to help, help offset the cost. In terms of maintenance, it's going to be pretty much the same that everything else that happens in the space, which is it's a collaboration between the CSA. And there are going to be two garden coordinators who help oversee that space and to keep an eye on things. And they will be primarily in charge of anything that is teaching related and enrichment related and helping to coordinate with teachers that way. We'll continue to work with our facilities managers, both at Pine Hill and at the district. And we've maintained a wonderful relationship with the town and a huge, huge shout out to Sean Coleen and Edie M. Weiss. They have been incredibly supportive of this project and helped us with many steps along the way, advising us on what to do for things that we had no experience in doing. And so on the whole, the collaboration, I think that we're really set up well because there's no one tiny piece of the, there's no one whole piece that's owned by one person. It is, it is a cooperative effort to maintain this space. Are there any questions in particular? We could, I think Lori and I could talk about this for a while, but I.
I want to, I just want to say that I think it's such an awesome thing that you're doing and I mean, all of the, all of the people involved in, in putting this together. This is incredible for our children and, you know, I've got a middle child that does not like to sit still. But you know, having that outdoor space is so wonderful for them and I think it's great. I love the idea of the benches. So you know, I coordinated with a couple of room parents and we, we bought the third grade teachers, you know, one of the benches. And I, I'm trying to spread the word because I think that's a great way to, to get some additional donations and because every class has year end gifts and you know, we struggled by the end after teacher appreciation being so close to year end gifts of trying to come up with ideas. And this is something that's very thoughtful and I think practical. So I love the, I love the fundraising efforts. I love everything about it. So really, thank you. That's all I, I can say is thank you.
Wow. Thank you. And I think that's what we really wanted to reflect in the spaces, that is the multifunctional area. This is something that sure teachers and students will use, but this is, I can very much see CSC meetings happening there, CPAC meetings happening there, new family visits happening there. Plus everything that happens on the weekend as well. And one thing that I know that we haven't noted is that in the planning process, we've been working with Challenge Success to talk about how do we integrate their goals within the design? So that again, this becomes a venue and a nexus for lots of the core concepts that we have throughout the district. And I'm certainly thinking about all of our Portrait of a Graduate conversations we had before the pandemic and experiential learning. And I think this is a great way to just create a space for that on our campus, because we have many wonderful spaces on our campus. And this will be a nice addition and a very central hub.
Great. Thank you so much. I have so much pride for the, for this and all the work and the collaboration and what it gives to the students and the teachers and our community. First thing with pride and thank you. Thank you for everyone, for all your work and everyone else's work. It's just, it's such a gift to have. It really is. I just, I remember when we first saw that, I think the first drawing at the advisory meeting, Barbara, like, like the first glimpse of this before the pandemic and it's so nice to see it. We're right here. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, they started percolating this vision nearly four years ago. And again, the tenants of life science and sustainability and mindfulness and communing and it goes on and on and on. And there is one of those raised beds is a fairy garden for our little kids or, or our big kids or principal. I mean, there's, there's so many layers to creativity, imagination. I, 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 I can't think of a better way to help us fulfill our vision. So hats off. And you, you've been incredibly collaborative. There is, you've involved so many parents and educators and kids and you've been so intentional and thoughtful. And I thank you for your leadership, Julie and Lori and waiting with bated breath.
I feel like the whole process too is such a great teachable story for our kids. I mean, just the community coming together to build something wonderful that fulfills needs and wants and celebrates everyone. And I think it's amazing. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And what, what I always say is, we didn't, we didn't really do this. We just connected the dots. When we went out there and we really started talking over the course of a year to teachers and special educators, and again, across the district, really trying to listen. A constellation appeared and all we had to do was draw the lines and then find someone as wonderful as Nicole Weemeyer to help us really bring that to life in a design. And it really, we just, we just helped put it together, but the vision was reflective of everyone in the community.
That was very nicely put. That was very nicely put, Julie. Great. Oh, so we have the, the first read of the changes to the handbook. And Barb, do you want to speak to?
Sure. I've provided you with an overview. As it says at the top of the handout, our central office folks are, have, have really coordinated having our legal counsel help us look thoroughly, not at each individual handbook, but at the tenants that need to be in all four of our school handbooks. So that is under advisement right now and we look forward to getting some tangible recommendations and updates to anything that's impacted by law, which, which is a lot of what we do is governed by, by rules and regulation. So that level of detail will be available to us later in the summer. And I'm sure we'll bring, we'll bring that to the school committee in the fall. From a, from a school operational, our practices, all of the nuances that are specific to Pine Hill. We really did a thorough update last year. I'm glad to say we no longer have a humongous COVID appendices. Although I am certain, well, you know, that's never going away, but, but the, all of the, the layers that we had over the last year or so with, with how we changed some of our school operations. We're now back to the basic handbook. And as you can see, we, we really did some wordsmithing. Very little, very little needed to be updated. Our students at the elementary level, the infamous device watches, the Apple watches or the other brands that are out there have made their way into our classrooms. And I recently came across the third grader whose grandparent was calling them in the middle of a math lesson. And so you can see where, where we're trying to be more comprehensive. It's not just about cell phones anymore. But any, any, any cellular devices are expected to be turned off and in children's backpacks during, during the instructional day. I, some, some of the things that we had in the school handbook that are referenced and are kept more up to date on our school website. I, I checked out the specifics and just referenced where people could find those on the school website, our curriculum, recycled, assessment plans, our school, school committee members that are named specifically, that's elsewhere in our website. So I've just linked those things in our handbook. But there were very few changes and they are referenced there. One of the big changes procedurally, gone are the days where our students were allowed to ride another school bus home for a playdate. We're just, we, our, our bus company just can't accommodate that. Our buses are more crowded. You know, our enrollment ebbs and flows. The number of students that are riding school buses is higher than ever, which is wonderful after, you know, after last year when our Kyle line, you know, used to go down around Rosa's garage. And so our families know and I periodically communicate. You know, if it's for childcare purposes, of course we'll make that accommodation. But if it's for a social playdate, the families really need to, to provision for that transportation. So that's that. Those are the school changes. And again, perhaps that, you know, at a September meeting or an October meeting, we'll, we'll bring back all, any of the policy updates that our legal counsel is working on. They, they don't do policy, you do policy, but they do the legal, the legal tenants.
Right. Thanks Barb. Amanda or Gita or Dennis, any questions on the first read? No? Okay. Beth, I'm just looking at the time too. So I know you're, Beth or Kathleen is for the, the school improvement plan.
I think Chair, I, I think again, Assistant Superintendent McCoy is going to jump to the region. Dawn and I will stay with Sherburne, so we can finish our meeting and we'll get over there as soon as possible. So please, let's finish. And I do want to say, Dr. Brown did share with you, so school committee, as she said, you know, policy is obviously in the hands of school committee. What really is important is when you look at the four districts, uniform, consistent policies. It is probably, again, your student handbooks are the most important policies that you have. So we're not talking about the protocols, the procedures, but we are going to put, as she said, a plan in place each year. Our attorneys will meet with our leadership teams to review the student handbooks in full and to be able to make kind of uniform recommendations across the board. And obviously there are some things that are particular to each school. We consider this a best practice and look forward to implementing that in the district.
Okay. Thank you. So Beth, you're going to take off and Dr. Smith, you are going to talk about the school improvement plan?
Yes, thank you. I'm actually going to hand that over to Dr. Brown to
Oh, Dr. Brown, okay, sorry.
To go over the school improvement plan for Pine.
Um thank you. Our school improvement plan is in draft form. Uh this is your first read. We still, we still have some uh um muscle to add to the bone structure, if you will. Um uh but I wanted to give you enough uh to to certainly know the big bullseyes that we're planning on focusing on next year. Um our school advisory council uh all year long talks about school improvement. Uh obviously, our faculty and and you know, there's, there's many sections uh uh through our leadership team, et cetera, where we're always uh taking stock of the growth we're making and and where where there's room for improvement or next steps. Uh so I I see the two pillars of, first of all, you'll see a unified school improvement plan, uh which is this uh across all four schools. So kudos to folks behind the scenes who organized that. We used to all, you know, have our own little way of of documenting things and it probably got confusing um to those of you who take stock of all four schools. Uh so we worked very hard to show our alignment of our school improvement goals with those uh from the strategic plan and the superintendent's goals for next year. I see two main platters on which everything else rests. And those are innovation and those are our work around diversity, equity and inclusion. Uh it's hard. In in this plan, we've teased apart a little bit social emotional learning and our DEI work. But those concepts and philosophies are so woven together. It's, it's, it, I I wanted to tease them apart enough to be clear about some specific action steps. Uh but but you know, the overall climate, culture, psychological safety, sense of belonging, y- y- so on and so on. Uh you know, relevance, literacy, et cetera, perspective, voice, agency of our students, all of those things that I see uh woven in that domain are, are uh, are all interconnected. Um but for clarity's sake, we tr- we try to uh, we tried to tease them out a little bit. So as you know, we have invested a lot of time, energy and money into growing robust readers and writers workshop models. And of course, we will continue. Uh uh you know, there's, there's uh much growth that we've made and there's a lot of refinement and coordinated articulation that is, is yet to follow uh across our twenty classroom sections. Uh next year, we're going to, in addition to continuing that work, we're going to take a very concerted focus in our math workshop model. Uh we have room to grow opportunities for differentiated instruction at a much uh that are much more specific to student needs. Um we, you know, we do a fair job of challenging and uh providing intervention and and challenging students, and we can do a better job. So all of the structures and the best practices and the research that drive our readers and writers workshop model, uh meaning, meaning much more small group and individual conferencing, conferring, coaching than whole group instruction like the old days. Uh we, we really need to make sure we, we bring those tenants into our work, uh our, our math workshop. Um and we're poised to do that uh for so many reasons with our professional development and the math coach that we added this year that supports elementary educators across both of our schools in concert. And Beth has helped us uh stop looking, or not just look at our K five program, but she, she has us collaborating and looking at K eight uh across curriculum areas. So we're, we're really um uh branching out in terms of the collaboration opportunities that our teachers have across the elementary and middle school model. Um y- you uh, as long as we have been engaged in challenge success in our Portrait of a Graduate work, we've been talking about, we've been um seeped in professional development around project-based learning. I um, it has been a nice to touch, great when teachers pull that into their practices approach. And we, we need to tie a bow around that. We, we need to nail that as uh not really cool when teacher so and so does a little bit more of this than than other colleagues. Uh but we really need to unify um that those are, that the project-based learning, the authentic inquiry-based approach to to learning within a, a larger topic or theme uh is the norm, not the once in a while nice place that we touch. Um we know it's more engaging for kids. We know it, it allows more individualized learning. We know it allows, or it, it pulls in the tenants of our Portrait of a Graduate, those, those higher level critical collaboration uh skills. Um and that our children, learning is more meaningful for our children when they connect it to the real world. And not just their world, but the um, the, the global awareness uh beyond third grade at Sherburne or 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 what have you. Um so you'll, you'll see, I pl- plan to use um the majority of our building-based professional development time next year for e- each grade level to uh to go from knee deep to um to ear deep in that work next year. Uh our next goal area, o- obviously, we will, we look forward to embracing all of the uh areas for improvement that are identified in our equity audit work this year. Um that said, we certainly know a lot of areas that we have already identified that deserve our attention and and improvement, our recruiting practices, our, the resources we use to teach, the um uh, you know, uh helping students with affinity groups within our schools for uh components of identity uh that particularly uh students who have identities that are uh underrepresented and and um there, you know, there's so many ways that we uh are working to deepen the learning experiences and the culture and climate around diversity, equity and inclusion. And we look forward, you know, we, we've um identified a, a starting place for our focus next year. And in June, we will get big picture feedback from the audit. Later in the summer, we'll get more finite data analysis uh findings from the audit. So I I look forward to um having a supplement or additional information to share with you. Um and obviously, that's something that we'll all process together. Uh our students, our teachers have made great headway this year uh with our racial literacy and social justice work that we have infused across the curriculum and will continue to do so. Um our final goal area, I uh, as you know, we've been working very hard to grow our MTSs structures. Those are the tiered responses of intervention that we uh are charged uh uh understanding our student, the progress that individual and collective students, collective groups of students are making in response to our teaching practices, our curriculum, individual student needs. Um we, we've, we've really sunk our teeth into that in the last couple of years. And we've, we've been fortunate to have staff who have helped us hone our lens beyond the academics to uh assuring that intervention responses are in place for kids behaviorally and social and emotional uh learning areas. We're taking uh, obviously, we're going to continue to, to grow those structures. Next year, we're taking uh a step further with the consultation of our behavior specialists and our psychologists and our counselor and uh, you know, administration and and our interventionist staff. And we're adding a tier three support for our students. I I envision, you know, maybe less than a handful at any given time, but our students who are um who, our students for whom learning is uh more significantly disrupted due to dysregulation, emotional dysregulation, behavioral dysregulation. These aren't necessarily uh our students who are already identified, that may have already been identified with an educational disability. These are kids for whom um, you know, maybe they've experienced trauma, maybe they uh have some undiagnosed mental health needs, maybe they're going through some really hard uh transitions or school adjustment uh kinds of challenges. And uh so they're maybe more oppositional or um um or withdrawn from their learning or acting out in certain ways. And we have a lot of resources to support those kids, but we also want a place to support kids when they need uh when they need intervention. And it's uh sometimes disruptive to support them in the classroom in the heat of the moment or um, or it's not the most dignified place to process with a child what, what's hard for them in that moment, right? Um so, and we also have some kids who are really good at task avoidance. And when they come to the principal's office or the nurse's office or the counselor's office and we, we layer our love on them, um sometimes we're giving them mixed messages. So we look forward to having um uh an area in our building and we're replicating a, a structure of support that Chickering has um developed over the last few years. We look forward to replicating that, where kids can go when they're not engaged as learners. And again, these children are pre-identified. This isn't when a teacher was frustrated or a principal is, you know, frustrated in the heat of the moment. These are, these are families that we have engaged and we're partnering with and, you know, kids that we're goal setting with and we're, we're um, you know, progress monitoring closely. Uh but a place where they can go and, and um have a, a, a calmer approach to completing the task that's hard in the classroom with the support that they need in that moment. Um so it's very specific skill instruction and that we're hooking them in so there's not task avoidance and we're not conditioning um um some of the behaviors that get kids kind of out of class. You know, we, we don't want to feed into the uh conditioning inappropriate responses, but we certainly want to be able to respond in the heat of the moment to, again, I'm picturing at any given time, you know, that's maybe, that's tops, you know, one or two percent of our students are, 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 are showing that level of dysregulation for whatever reason. Um and and again, the counselors and the psychologists are not always available at the time the kids need them uh because of their, you know, their other pressing scheduling needs.
Barb, I hate that. Oh, Barbie, you're almost done. Sorry. I'm just
All right. Yes, that is, that is the overview. I got, I got impassioned. I apologize.
No, no, that's, I love it. I love it. It's hard to, it's hard to cut you off because it's, it's, it's great stuff and thank you. So. Any uh, any questions from the school committee? Comments? No? Okay. All right. So next on the agenda is the, is the um, is uh to approve the consent agenda. Could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Dennis Quan, Sirgus.
Kida Russo, second.
Any discussion? No. Dennis?
Dennis Quan, yes.
Amanda?
Amanda Brown, yes.
Kida?
Kida Russo, yes.
Nancy Cordell, yes. Okay, and um this is my last meeting. So if you have any agenda items that you want to add, um I would send them to Amanda. Um and then that, you know, you guys will vote Amanda in next meeting. Um so uh I think that's all for the agenda.
Thank you for everything that you've done, Nancy.
Oh, thank you. And it was my honor to be with my honor the last three years. I appreciate everyone. And I really, you know, work, working with, you know, Barb and the teaching staff and the administration is just, it's working with uh gold and just people that think outside the box and, you know, improving students, improving the learning process all the time. So thanks tirelessly and with energy and passion. And it's so, so great to be part of that. So thank you for, thank you, everyone. It really is.
Sad to see you go, Nancy.
Well, this is an opportunity to recognize again that you're outgoing members. Uh I'm gonna start with David Casas, who isn't with us this evening. Uh David has made great efforts. Uh he's been here for, I believe, this school year uh fulfilling a term. I want to thank him. This isn't an easy volunteer uh elected uh job to jump into. Uh so we do have, I don't know if you can see it, I wish we were in person. And thank you so much for doing this on Zoom. Uh Dawn and I will be running over to the region as soon as we leave here, but I hope you can see the glass apple, which we have here for uh David and also giving me an opportunity to talk about Nancy. So I have been so fortunate as your interim superintendent, because I call it the A-team. Uh I came on board and I have a member from each of your school committees. Uh we call that the Joint School Committee. And Nancy has been a wonderful part of that with Sarah Gutierrez Dunn out of Dover, uh Kate Potter from your own Sherburne and uh Lynn Collins. And we get together um just about every month to plan the agendas, to have discussions, to talk about the challenges. Nancy and I have had the opportunity beyond that to meet every month to plan the Sherburne School Committee meetings. I want to thank her. She is smart. Her business mind, she was one of the people right away who came on board and welcomed our teachers on the first day of school. She has been at my side as we plan professional development for our wonderful sixteen-member school committee, taking account of all the members. Uh Nancy, really, I, I lucked out this year. Uh I watch your dedication and your commitment, not only to your fellow school committee members, but certainly to Dr. Brown, her staff. And just looking at the parents here this evening, you know, Monica, Julie, our librarian Laurie, uh our, our teachers. You know, you can tell when you walk in that school that it is a very special place and it doesn't happen just by chance. So again, Nancy, thank you for your leadership. I truly will miss you. Uh I've been around a long time. And like I said, I don't say this easily. This was clearly the A-team and you were a big part of that. So thank you.
Thank, those are very kind words. Oh, thanks, everyone. I'll be, I'm not gonna be, I'm not gonna be, I'll be right around, I'll be around. So. But um, thank you. And I will, you know, with unanimous consent, should we, we can adjourn this meeting. All right. Thank you, everyone.